Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the February 4th, 2025 City Council meeting. As you've noticed, I am not Ron Jacobson. He is ill today, so I'll be running the meeting in his place. Going to take one thing real quick. Clerk will note that everybody else is present. Take one thing out of order, amendments to the agenda. Unfortunately, the public hearing for the Gabrielle State's duplexes zone change has to be moved. The applicant is ill and not here, and we can't have a public hearing without the applicant, so that's going to be rescheduled for March 4th.
And we'll need a motion to that.
Oh.
To continue it to a date certain. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Stig Leder.
Aye.
Plu.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Westland.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion passes. So with that, anybody that was here to testify for that will give you, unless you want to hang out for the rest of the meeting, we'll give you a minute to go about your day. And again, apologies.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, then we'll move on to ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations. Some mayor announcements. When I say "I," I'm referring to Ron here, and me. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the incredible work of River City Middle School's Titan leadership team. These compassionate students went above and beyond by assembling care packages for cancer patients at Cancer Care Northwest and adding heartfelt handwritten notes of encouragement. Their kindness and dedication to serving others reflect the very best of our community. Thank you to those young leaders for showing us all the power of empathy and the importance of making a positive impact. Thank you very much to everybody. City Hall and city business offices will be closed Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day. The police department will be open for walk-in emergencies, for water-related emergencies. Call 208-773-3517. For announcements, also on our appointments, we have on here the reappointment of Ray Kimball, Chris Schreiber, and Bobby Wilhelm to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Counselor Malloy, I was hoping to be able to ask them a couple of questions before I voted, just to have some backing for the voting that we're doing. Is that something I can do tonight?
Um, since these are not my appointments, is the P&amp;Z going to be able to continue to operate if we table this until the next meeting where the mayor is here?
Yes, so they are appointed through March 1st, so we would have next meeting to bring this back if needed.
In that case, I would move to table this reappointment to next meeting.
One quick question before we do. I do know that they all go through and sign a code of conduct. They have been vetted by the chairman and by the mayor as well, and I know in the past we haven't done questions. So I guess my question is, do we really need to table it?
I appreciate that, and I'm not saying that I have anything against any of these three men. I was given the opportunity to talk to Mr. Schreiber before we confirmed him, but I do think of it a little bit of like asking me to sign a contract that someone signed just before me, just because the person before me signed it. And I think it would be nice if I could just ask a couple of questions about the job that they do for the city, so that when I do vote, I have more backing for my vote than just the people before me said yes. So that's all that I'm asking for.
And for me personally, being that these are the mayor's selections for appointment, I believe he would need to be here to defend his selections also.
Fair.
So I'll second then. We need a second for his motion.
Really quickly, just to keep numbers up, if we wanted, if you guys were comfortable with Chris, we could separate him out also and do that reappointment tonight and bring the other two back to the next meeting. Just one potential option.
I didn't have any questions for Chris, so if that's what the council would like to do, I'm okay with that, but...
So in that case, I would move to approve Chris Schreiber for reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Well, I guess, do I have to rescind my last motion first?
No, in fact, the, so the appointment, the mayor makes the appointment, the council just confirms it, so it's not even necessarily a motion to appoint.
To, a motion to confirm.
It's really just a confirm, and it's just a majority vote of the council.
So moved. So are we?
Rhanna, did you want to take roll call for Chris?
Sure.
Stig Leder.
Aye.
Plu.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Westland.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion passes. Then we need to, we need to...
There would be a motion to...
I would move to table the confirmation of the reappointments of Ray Kimball and Bobby Wilhelm to the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Stig Leder.
Aye.
Plu.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Westland.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We might want to make sure that they're at the next meeting as well.
Good point.
We will, we'll reach out to both of them. Thank you.
With that, do we have any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, and site visits?
I would, oh, no. Next item.
All right, consent calendar.
Can I ask to remove item F from the consent calendar and add it to new business, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So with that, we need a motion on the consent calendar, absent item F.
President, to approve consent calendar minus item F.
Second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Plu.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Westland.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Stig Leder.
Aye.
Motion passes. Field, do we need to wait for new business, or can we just vote on item F right now?
Um, so you can, you could take the, you could take it right now and just adjust that.
So I'd move to approve consent calendar item F.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Plu.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Westland.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Stig Leder. Abstain.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't hear that that was the reason why. Okay.
I only did that because I would forget once new business came around.
Yeah, no worries.
Back on there, so thank you, guys. Moving on to public hearings, item A has been postponed. So item B, we're at the Kildir annexation file number ANNX-24-4, and like to open the public hearing.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Anna Stahl, one of the planners here with the city. I'm going to be presenting the staff report for the Kildir annexation. The property owner is Northern Lights Development LLC, and the applicant is Lake City Engineering. They are requesting to annex approximately 4.89 acres into the city with the zoning recommendation from the October 24th Planning and Zoning Commission of residential, single-family R1. And the project is located east of Cecil and west of, I got that backwards, sorry. There's something on my screen here. I'm going to fix this, and then I'm going to keep going. Okay, sorry about that. The project is located south of Kildir Avenue between Greens Ferry and Cecil. It is currently in a county pocket and is...
Not to interrupt you too much, but you're...
Oh, boy. I think that's better.
All right, and we're back.
All right, so the property is located in a county island. There are properties within the city to the north and the west, and then properties still in the county to the east and the south. The surrounding zoning within the city is single-family residential R1. And then the properties to the east and the south are within the county and are not zoned under the city's zoning. It's currently being used as large lot, single-family residential, and is located over the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer. The water provider is Ross Point Water District, and the wastewater provider is the city of Post Falls. The city would be willing and able to serve development at densities allowable within the R1 zoning designation. For traffic, Kildir Avenue is a minor collector roadway and provides connectivity between Greens Ferry and Cecil, which are a minor arterial and a major collector. And there are no impacts anticipated on the traffic network from developments at densities that would be allowed within the R1 zoning designation. The future land use designation is low-density residential, and the focus area is 41 North, per the comprehensive plan. Now getting into the zoning criteria, the first would be, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and the focus area within the comprehensive plan? And two, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted comprehensive plan? Getting into some of those, I mentioned the future land use designation is low-density residential. This encompasses all single-family, up to eight dwelling units per acre. And the requested R1 zone does fall into that category. The focus area is 41 North, which prioritizes pedestrian connectivity to all multi-use paths and trails, and also prioritizes improving access for residential areas to the 41 North, Highway 41 corridor. Getting into some of those goals and policies, goal number six is to maintain and improve Post Falls' transportation network on pace and in concert with need and plan objectives. Any development that would be allowed by this annexation would improve the existing transportation network, as well as develop it with interior roadways, further expanding it. Going into some of the policies, policy 24 is to plan and protect transportation corridors, and ensure adequate rights of way are maintained and obtained. And annexation of this property would come with right-of-way dedication. Policy 26 is to maintain and improve continuity of sidewalks, trails, and bicycle paths. And any development allowed by this annexation would be expand, expanding the current network of sidewalks and bicycle paths in the area. And policy 33, annexation should help implement the Post Falls' transportation plan and enable the completion and preservation of circular, circulatory patterns for roads and pedestrian ways in the area, which, again, development of this area would expand on what is already out there. This is kind of a visual representation of what I was just discussing. Currently, the area within the county pocket does not have improved roadways on the south side of Kildir or the west side of Cecil. That's represented by that blue line there. This, the subject property here is identified in that red box with the dashed lines. It would, development of this area would be one step closer to improving the roadways identified by that blue line, which would increase connectivity for all of the subdivisions in the area. And it's important to note that on the end, there is a future park location that would benefit from increased connectivity. The, as I mentioned earlier, the road network that would be improved includes Kildir, which is a minor collector. Frontage improvements would come along with any development there. And that does connect to the major collector and minor arterial of Cecil and Greens Ferry. Taking a look at some more goals and policies, goal number seven from the comprehensive plan is to plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. Housing is a need within Post Falls, and development of housing can work towards that goal. Policy eight, encourage compatible infill development and redevelopment of vacant land and underutilized properties within city limits. This can be considered an infill development and an underutilized property, as it is within a county pocket. And it is surrounded by a single-family residential R1 zoning and would be compatible with that zone. Policy nine is to encourage annexation of county islands within the city with priority given to areas surrounded by incorporated areas and that have readily available service and infrastructure capacity, which this property is surrounded by areas already within the city, and there are infrastructure available within Kildir Avenue. Zoning criteria three asks, does the proposed zoning district create any demonstrable adverse impacts upon the delivery of services? And we, this is a list of most of the agencies that we notified of this public hearing in the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. We received comments for, from seven agencies at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. These comments ranged from remain neutral, no impact, no comment, or no comment at this stage. We received an additional three comments for this public hearing. Again, they are no comment at this stage, no impact, or no comment. And then we also received public comments from members of the community. The first two comments were received prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. Comments three and four were received at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and then comments five and six were received after we sent out notices for tonight's public hearing. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Your slide with the blue line, are you saying that this annexation would give us frontage improvements for the entirety of that?
Any development, no, not for the entirety of it, but it would be one step closer.
Sure, yes, okay. That was my question, thanks.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to speak? State your name for the record, please, and I'm not sure who's the keeper of the clock. Over there, Shelly.
If I can figure out how to make it work. It's not the same as it used to be. Used to be. Oh, there we go.
All right.
Council President Malloy, councilors, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue, for the record. Representing tonight, Northern Lights Development, they're also known as Hallmark Homes. They've built a lot of subdivisions, a lot of homes in this area and in the city of Post Falls. Appreciate Anna and her staff report and her presentation. A lot of what I'm going to cover or talk about, she's already covered, so I won't go into it in too much detail unless you guys have questions. We do consider this an infill piece of property. You can see it's highlighted there in blue, south of Kildir, completely surrounded by the yellow there, which is all the R1 zoning. So that county infill area is slowly but surely filling in, which is nice to see. These are the criteria that Anna had talked about. We have two things tonight, annexation and zoning. Annexation criteria is the annexation in the best interest of the city. We think it is. It's an infill project. It's surrounded by like subdivisions, like R1 zoning, like products, so we think it's the best fit in the best interest of the city. The zoning criteria, there's three of them. Anna talked about them. I was prepared to go through my presentation, but I don't think I need to unless you guys have questions on them, because they were covered, they're in the narratives and the staff packet that we've submitted that's in your packet, so... Again, it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan, low-density residential. R1 is an implementing zoning district within that low-density residential. It fits with the surrounding uses. Sewer, water, utilities are all available to serve the project. As Anna had said, all of the agencies have been notified and either have no comment or are neutral on this. So I think with that, I'll stand for questions if there are any for me.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Dittman, are you currently on the planning and zoning schedule for a special use permit for this property?
No.
Thank you.
Not that I'm aware of. I hope not.
Do you have a preliminary lot or plat map for that site? I'm just curious, specifically about, there's a access road kind of on the west side of that adjacent property. Is that going to continue through your, this proposed property, or what's kind of the...
Counselor, we have, we submitted a preliminary plat that did go through the P&amp;Z Commission already and received approval, so we will have. And I don't, I didn't bring it tonight because this is annexation, we're not supposed to talk about it, but yes. The north, south street will continue, as well as that street on the south that goes east-west will continue through as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Clerk, do we have anybody wishing to testify? Thank you. In favor, not wishing to speak, Jim Sibley, is that correct? We have a letter. I'm not sure if this is, oh, this is Mr. Sibley's.
It was with that, with the in favor, not wishing to speak.
So do I read, all right. Councilman, we appreciate speaking with you today on behalf of the property owners adjacent to the Kildir Meadows Project. We have submitted our comments regarding the project to make the most of our time during this meeting. For the record, we would like to express our support for this initiative. Developer has been receptive to our concerns and has engaged in constructive dialogue. Our primary interest is preserving the tree line along our shared boundary. These trees enhance the value of the lots in the proposed Kildir Meadows Project and align with the city of Post Falls' various policies and goals. We recommend that the developer incorporate language into the CCNRs mandating the replacement of any trees removed due to health or safety issues with new equivalent conifer trees planted in the exact locations. As representatives of the North Britton Road Owners Group, we respectively urge the City Council to, one, approve the annexation and rezoning of the subject property to R1; two, approve the Kildir Meadows Development Plan; and three, include contingent language in the approvals to protect the existing healthy and mature deciduous and conifer trees along the property's western boundary. Thank you once again for allowing us to address the council respectfully, Bob and Bobby Dugan, 3584 North Britton Road, Post Falls. In favor, not wishing to speak, Matthew and Lauren Burton. Please see attached letter. We are part of the same group that will, that will be speaking for, that Con will be speaking for. Here we go. Dear Post Falls City Council, on behalf of one of the North Britton Road property owners, we are writing to express our strong support for the Kildir Meadows Project. We appreciate the opportunity to share our perspective and commend the developer for their open communication and willingness to address our concerns. Our primary focus is the preservation of the existing tree line along the western boundary of the proposed development adjacent to our properties. This mature tree line provides significant aesthetic value, enhances property values for both our group and the future residents of Kildir Meadows, and aligns with the city of Post Falls' environmental policies and goals. To ensure the long-term protection of this valuable asset, we respectfully request that the City Council include the following condition in the project approvals. The developer shall incorporate language into the Kildir Meadows CCNRs mandating the replacement of any trees within the existing western boundary tree line that are removed due to the health or safety concerns. Replacement trees shall be equivalent conifer species of comparable size where feasible and planted in the exact locations of the removed trees. Specifically, we urge City Council to approve the annexation rezoning of the subject property to R1; two, approve the Kildir Meadows Development Plan; three, include the aforementioned contingent language regarding these tree preservation in the project approvals. Thank you for your time and consideration of our request. We believe that with this condition in place, the Kildir Meadows Project will be a valuable addition to the community. Sincerely, Matthew and Lauren Burton, 3644 North Britton Road, Post Falls. And finally, in favor, wishing to speak, Con Brady.
Hopefully I can animate some of what you just heard, and by coincidence, guess what I have.
Thank you. Just your name for the record, please.
My name is Con Brady. I live at 3664 North Britton Road, which is west of the development in question. I am a retired military officer and a command pilot, as well as a former airline exec. My property abuts on the western side of the property that we're talking about tonight. And I am a spokesperson for all those folks that you just read into the record. And I won't take 15 minutes. I think I've allowed 15.
You've got four.
Well, I was only planning on taking five, so I'll try to speed it up. As you've heard, our group supports approval of the annexation rezoning. We also support the development plan. We also respectfully request consideration by the council to add the language that you've kind of already heard. On the other hand, that's a very soft request. We don't call ourselves professionals and understand, so we're actually open to anything that you think fits and accommodates. What I would like to do is go over just real quick some things, reference what Anna has already covered, the proposed redistricting review criteria. Okay, gonna count this against me? It's not working. Oh, you got it on the mouse, that's why. There we go. Right there. Okay, rough the bat. Let me get it. That is a picture out my backyard of this wonderful tree line. So real quick, out of your comp plan, which is number two item zoning district, re-consistent with goals and policies contained in the comp plan. Goal three, maintain and improve small-scale charm. Trees do that. Protect and enhance Post Falls scenic natural areas for present and future generation. Trees do that. Policy one specifically talks about the long-term fiscal health of the community. I think somebody already addressed that in their letter. We all bought these properties because of the tree line, and I think the developer acknowledges that these trees are going to help him move those properties also. And of course, implement the goals and policies of the plan. Policy 71 is very specific. It actually promotes the planning and, most importantly, protection of trees citywide, helping to beautify, provide shade and comfort, affirm the city's association with the outdoors and wildlife habitat. And I've got a good picture a little later that will emphasize that. The city went out and they did an assessment in concurrence with what one of your planning commission members asked for, and also what was suggested in the staff report that was submitted for the meeting. And they were healthy, and, but they weren't movable without destroying the trees. Hallmark went out actually and started clearing so they could get ready for future development. And so they've already cleared a significant portion of the trees. But they did leave a substantial belt of trees, so the, what you're seeing there on the slide is actually still there. We would like to thank Michael Fitzgerald and Hallmark Homes for being so receptive and open to talking to us. I think this is a success story, because the developer's been very open to talking to us. Thanks also, Drew. So everybody's kind of been working together to try to find a solution that kind of is a win-win for everybody, the city, the community, and the developer. Therefore, we're asking to approve. We think that Hallmark's going to do a great job improving our community and getting some more houses in there and having us mature. We'd also ask, as you've already heard, that maybe come up with some sort of language that supports the comp plan and finds a way to kind of support the tree line. We are aware that we don't want to be over-restrictive to the developer. We're just looking, again, for some sort of win-win scenario.
Your time's up, sir. So if you can just wrap it up real quick?
It's done. I kind of talked about that already, and there's a pretty picture of, to the northeast and southeast of my lot and those wonderful trees, and I had to show that.
Great shot.
It is. The Dugans took that. There's a bunch of hawks and owls in there. So you're doing the animals a favor, too, if you find a way to save the trees. That's all I got. If you have any questions, otherwise I'll kick my butt down by the seat.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Mr. Dittman, would you care to rebut?
Thank you, Council President Malloy. Again, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, for the record. Not really rebuttal, just want to say we've been working with those neighbors, and it's not very often that I get to stand in front of you guys where the neighbors aren't screaming and yelling at me for what we're trying to do, so it's nice to work with them. Little context, this was an old tree farm, for those of you that didn't know that, so there was a substantial amount of trees. Hundreds of hundreds of trees that were on this property. Most of them were burlapped, wrapped, or planted in buckets, obviously not viable. There was the row of trees that you saw in the pictures that were up there, that were up against the common property line, that were actually planted trees that are somewhat viable. We've had the urban forester out there to look at them, so we've agreed to save those to the best of our ability during the development process and work with the neighbors, so... Just wanted to clarify a few things there. So any other questions for me?
I mean, I think our only tool for this would be a development agreement, right, to...
to try and put languages. Is that something that you feel like is necessary, Mr. Ditman? Or is this a priority for you guys?
I mean, if you guys feel it's necessary, I mean, we're certainly willing to put something in the CCNRs, you know, to that the trees are to be saved. Like I said, we've already cleared some of the property. The trees have been saved already. You know, we build houses, we sell them to people. We don't control what happens after that, obviously. But yeah, we're certainly willing to put something in the CCNRs to that effect, if that's what you guys feel is necessary.
I would kind of support that avenue to preserve these trees as making an agreement between the land developer and the private owner and kind of keep us out of that mess a little bit. Not that I... I mean, I'm definitely for saving the trees. I have no argument about that. It's just kind of, I feel, outside of what we would like to get involved.
Understood.
Reasonable to me as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like to act?
Well, first, to run through the review criteria.
Oh, yeah. I forgot you're guiding this.
So this is an annexation and initial zoning. So the first item for consideration is, is the annexation of property in the best interest of the city?
Seems like it.
I'd say, you know, it fulfills a lot of the criteria that I look for, one being a county pocket that we are emphasizing in Bill, and another that it doesn't increase the geographical footprint of the existing city to prevent sprawl. So those are two big points for me.
Yeah.
All right. And then on to the initial zoning review criteria. So number one is, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted comprehensive plan?
Yes, the plan specifies low-density residential and R1 is an implementing zone.
Number two, is the proposed zoning district, excuse me, district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
Maintains and embraces transportation networks, I would say yes.
Policy eight, infill development, right? Policy nine, county pocket?
Right. And does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing services within the city?
None of them raised any objections.
Hey, can we just say for the record, it is nice to have testimony in favor as well?
Okay, with that, counsel, how would you like to act?
I move to... Oh, hold on. We're doing an annexation, right? Okay, I move to approve the Kildare annexation and have staff prepare the final ordinance for annexation.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Westland.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Stiglitter.
Aye.
Plou.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye. Motion passes. As for the zoning designation...
Are we approving that tonight?
Yes.
I move to approve the zoning designation of Kildare Annexation File Number ANX-24-4, finding that the zoning meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code as outlined in our deliberation and direct staff to prepare a reasoned decision.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Westland.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Stiglitter.
Aye.
Plou.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye. Motion passes. On to the next. Ordinance on Police Access in Exigent Circumstances. Chief.
Don't forget to open.
Oh, yes. Open the public hearing. Thank you.
Counsel President Malloy, council members, this is going to be like a two-part presentation. My backup tonight is going to be Prosecutor McGovern. I'm going to discuss at the beginning kind of why I brought this forward, why I'm asking for this, what this causes for us and delays, and go over a few pictures for you guys so you can see what I'm kind of talking about. She will cover any of the law cases and stuff that allows us to actually be able to do this sort of thing. So what I want to start out with is basically how we got here. Back on February of 2024, we received a phone call from an ex-husband. I'm just going to read you basically our call that came into our dispatch center and what he was relaying to them as we were getting ready to respond to this call. Got off the phone with his ex-wife. She has made comments that her dreams about hurting her children, which is a two-year-old child. She has been drinking, she's intoxicated. While she was on the phone, she yelled at the two-year-old child, was screaming at the two-year-old child. Ma was afraid for his son. She has asked for him to pick up the son because she doesn't feel safe with him staying there for the night. All of this was relayed to our dispatch center. Officers were dispatched to the apartment complex. And when we got there, this is the first we've seen anything like this in Post Falls before. We ran into a apartment complex that had a common area and had an access control. So we were not able to get into the access control. We tried to notify the fire department, because the fire department under fire code has access to all buildings. They have a knock box, which contains a fob in it, so they would gain access into it. They were not available. So we were trying to figure out how to get into this apartment with a potential risk to a two-year-old child. We were able to finally find someone in the apartment complex through our dispatch center that was able to get ahold of them and allow us access into the building. Took about fifteen minutes. Time is life when you have something where someone is potentially harmful, especially to a child, but to anyone. So we were able to get inside that apartment complex and secure that child so he was safe. So really, why do we need this? We're seeing an increase in developments of this common area with key access. We only found out about it because we responded to a call where we needed to get in and we couldn't get in. Since this, and I'll show examples of some pictures, I went out and started looking at some of the newer apartment complexes that we have built with the same style of access that we knew nothing about. Why do we need to get in there? Well, we need to get in there because of several reasons. We have medical calls that we respond to. We're usually there first before medical. We have a protection of life and property. Do we have someone breaking in? Do we have a domestic going on in this residence that we need to get into? Fire response. Our fire department is wonderful, but we are usually there first because we're out on the street. So we try to get in there to see if there's actual fire. We have to start evacuating people. We need to get into that apartment complex. We have had gated communities in Post Falls for a long time, and we have been able to work around those by making sure that the codes work. But there's times when they change the code, they don't notify us. We usually keep that code in our dispatch center under a certain file, and when we need to get in, they would give us that code so we can get in. Sometimes that changes, they don't notify us, we can't get into the gated community. Again, we're trying to figure out how we need to get into that. And it extends our ability to respond in a timely manner to a call. Again, for instance, someone has a heart attack. Time is essential. And if we can't get in there and do lifesaving techniques, then you know, just potential for that person living is less. So here I give an example of... This is the one that we actually responded to. You have the apartment complex with one main entrance. And I'm sorry about the back lighting, that was probably one of the days that we actually had sun. And you can see this is, once you get in it, I kind of relay this is like a hotel. You walk in, you have a long hallway, and you have doorways all the way off to the right, left. Those are the apartments. The common area is the hallway. And so you can see here that this is just a hallway with a coded access to get in. Now, backing up to when we first came across this, we did reach out to the developer. We did ask for some way of accessing into it. He was very supportive. He actually said, well, we didn't even think about that. And within a couple of days, he was able to put up a lock box with a fob for us to get into that apartment complex. Here's another one that's directly across the street. Same concept, main entrance, coded. You can see, again, the hallway that's a common area that goes down to the apartments. This is the lock box that he's installed for us. Basically, we go in, punch a code, we have access to the building, so we can get inside and do what we need to do. So what I'm asking for is for us to be able to respond and help people in a very timely manner. And this, not having the ability and not knowing that these apartments have that, really, really hampers us in what we need to do. By having this ordinance, we will be able to know which apartments have these, and we will be prepared to have access to those so we can get to those people that need our help. So this is the why. What you'll hear now is the legality of why we can. Before I do that, before I ask the prosecutor to come up, do you have any questions on what I've relayed to you guys so far? And I can always come back after this.
So you said the fire department has access to these common areas now?
Correct. Under fire code, they are granted access.
And are they using a keyless entry system for that? Or is it different every time?
They have what is called a knock box, which they have a key to. They open it up, usually that will contain either a key or a fob to get into the building.
Okay, so they've got a key that they keep somewhere that they can bring?
Yes.
And open it up?
Yes, correct.
And then, and if we were doing keyless entry, is that... I don't want to have sort of two different systems that we've got to maintain.
Right.
Could we all be using the same system for emergency access?
Well, we actually tried that. We tried to reach out to the fire department. There's two reasons why I don't want to do that. We tried to reach out to the fire department. They do not want to give us access to that key that gets into their knock boxes. The reason why I agree with them is because if we have a key and we lose that key, that key gets into all of the knock boxes within the city. So if that key is lost, then we have to replace locks on pretty much a majority of the businesses in Post Falls. So that was the decision we made to try and make sure the developer puts something in for us to get in as well.
So it's a universal key? It's not building by building? That's what your description sounded like. If you lose that key, then you have to change all the locks?
That's for the fire department knock box. Ours is just dedicated strictly for that building itself.
So I guess that's my first question, then, is the boxes that we're proposing with the language that we have will be, the entry to the building is not keyless, the ability to access whatever is in that box is keyless, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then this will be retroactive as well for buildings that already exist in the city that have these common areas, so they will be required to follow this ordinance?
No, my understanding is it's from now on.
It's from now on? Okay, okay.
Any further questions?
Chief, I'm guessing it's just like Airbnb is in the sense of it's a code.
Right.
Seven, eight, yeah.
Similar to a relative or something like that. Punch in the code, you have, you open it up, you have either a key or a fob to get you into the building.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll turn it over to the prosecutor now.
Good evening, counselors. Eileen McGovern, Post Falls City Prosecutor. I want to start by acknowledging what I think's already been said here tonight, and that is that the concept here is to access areas that are already common, so we're not looking to access somebody's private residence. Frankly, these are areas that are already accessed by pizza delivery drivers, by Amazon drivers, and then in the case of an emergency, law enforcement's simply looking to exercise a right that they already have. So I wanted to turn to one of the questions that you had provided, I think within the last twenty-four hours, which was, are there penalties for unwanted officer access? In order to answer that, I think it's important to note that the ordinance here doesn't create a new legal authority for law enforcement. It simply facilitates the legal authority that already exists, and that is to respond to exigent circumstances. I'm not going to that more in a little bit, but the consequence for failing to conform to constitutional standards regarding exigent circumstances would be suppression of evidence, there could be civil liability for law enforcement. So again, this is a right that already exists pursuant to both the United States Constitution as well as the state constitution. So we can do a little bit more here. And then, I'm sorry, before I move on, the other question you guys had was penalties for noncompliance by property owners. There isn't a specific penalty otherwise provided in the proposed ordinance, but in the Post Falls City ordinance, there's already a general penalty section, which is 1.24.010, which essentially means that any violation or provides that any violation of the Post Falls City Code constitutes a misdemeanor, subject to the standard misdemeanor penalties in Idaho, which are six months and a thousand dollars.
Question for you on that.
Yes.
So we have a complex with common areas that is owned by, say, a corporate party in New Jersey? And is managed by a local management agency. Who is that penalty going to be levied against?
So that's a good question. And the... I'm going to give you the lawyer response. It depends. But it could be the property owner, it could be the management company that is determined to have the most direct control over that. It could be all the parties, frankly, if all of them have some degree of control over whether or not that decision is made. So if that makes sense. Okay. All right. So the first question, and I want you to know that I've structured my responses here around a prior meeting that Mr. Harrington gave me access to. So I reviewed your concerns about these ordinances, and that's what I'm seeking to address. The first question that it seemed you guys were asking is, is this language constitutional? So this is the language that is proposed in the ordinance. And essentially, what it does is codify what is already to be found in both Idaho case law as well as US constitutional case law. So what are exigent circumstances? Basically, imminent risk of injury, so a lot of what Chief was talking about is that, so that the two-year-old who might be subject to harm, property that might be subject to imminent destruction, those kinds of things where law enforcement needs to get in right now, there's no time to secure a warrant, or a person's life could be ended, could be significantly harmed, or their property. Destruction of evidence, this is a situation where law enforcement shows up, they can hear drugs being flushed, basically, and there is not any time to secure a warrant. And hot pursuit, so escape of a suspect. So they're already appropriately, I guess, chasing or pursuing a fleeing suspect who then enters into a property. At that point, they're allowed to follow them in. What all of these have in common, what it boils down to is, these are circumstances under which we would otherwise get a warrant, but there is not time. And so law enforcement needs to act quickly. I don't want to spend too much time on this, but just, I guess, give you an overview, because I think what Chief already went over does a really good job of encapsulating what constitutes an exigent circumstance, but some examples out of Idaho law. Smoking couch outside an apartment. Turns out, the defendant in that case had dragged it outside earlier. It was on fire, but it was still smoking. Law enforcement didn't know what was going on. They encountered this couch. And because they were concerned about the possibility that somebody inside the apartment might be in danger, then they entered the apartment and, of course, located drugs. That's kind of the punchline for all of these usually, but so that was considered appropriate because there was concern about the life... So I guess danger to life or property inside that apartment. State versus Barrett, a man was found collapsed on the porch by his neighbor. He was unable to communicate. Law enforcement arrived, was worried about people inside the apartment. The neighbor said, usually there's a wife and child, I haven't seen them all day. At that point, law enforcement entered. That was deemed constitutional because, again, of the imminent concern. Domestic violence altercation, law enforcement show up to a home, the lady... And this was pursuant to a report by a neighbor that there was what sounded like violent happenings next door. When the victim answered the door, she was clearly upset, she was battered, she was shaking. She told law enforcement not to enter. They did anyway. And ultimately, that defendant was arrested for domestic battery. That was deemed okay, because clearly there were community caretaking issues that had to be attended to. Situations that do not apply, or where exigent circumstances don't apply, and I think it's a Situations that do not apply, or where exigent circumstances don't apply, and I think it's important to note this, if there's time to get a warrant. If there's that time, then this is not relevant. Oh, officer may not rely on circumstances that they create. So I won't get into details to respect your time, but basically if law enforcement shows up, creates a scenario where exigent circumstances now exist, that's not going to meet constitutional muster. Oh, and then State versus Wren, this is a case in which defendant was basically just disruptive. It just wasn't important enough. And law enforcement went after him mostly because he'd been a jerk. And that court found that's not enough. So I guess just to summarize, law enforcement's just asking for the capacity to exercise what's already an established constitutional right. Why do we need the specific ordinance? Again, I think that is fairly clear in terms of the, the Chief's presentation here tonight. So currently, law enforcement may not have the ability to enter, and that's what we're asking for. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. If you have any questions about my portion of the presentation, I'm happy to field them.
So an exigent circumstance would have to exist before the officer can use the lockbox to get access to the property?
Exactly.
So you can't just go like, look around and then determine that there's an exigent circumstance after he's walked in? That would violate.
That would violate because I think that would fall.
Fourth Amendment, right?
It would violate the Fourth Amendment. I think it would fall cleanly under the, the Idaho case law that says law enforcement can't create an exigent circumstance. And so by entering and wandering around, that's essentially what they would have done.
Right. Right. And, and in an exigent circumstance, an officer would otherwise be in the clear to just break the door, right?
Absolutely.
For emergency access?
Well, and I think that's what's important to note here is they're not asking for much. I mean, I mean, if they were standing at the, the door of your home and they were, they'd gotten a report, let's say that there was something happening inside that house that was concerning, and then they, let's say they heard a gunshot, you know, heard sounds of distress, they can bust open that door right then. And so they're, they're not asking even for that much here, is simply being able to access the common area where that front door exists in order to go about the performance of their duties in that case.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions?
So the language in the ordinance is not specific, but I'm assuming that it would apply to any other commercial retail space that has a common area as well?
I mean, that's, that's a good question. I think what is contemplated here are personal residences. But a commercial retail space is an area that's open to the public already. And so that wouldn't really be contemplated in the Fourth Amendment analysis.
Probably retail is not the correct language. It would be more like, I'm familiar with many commercial buildings, say in Coeur d'Alene, that have a central common area with maybe law offices and things like that that are locked up. But have a common area that is, also has an exterior door that is locked. So it's feasible that you could have possibly a report of breaking and entering into one of those suites that you would then need access to. Would this apply to that?
Well, that is a good question. I don't know if that's what is contemplated here. Again, it would fall under a different constitutional analysis in that case because it is more of an area that's open to the public. Let me see. As it's drafted. Yeah, I think, yes.
Ma'am?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like Chris has a better idea.
Thank you, Council. Chris Gabbard, Deputy City Attorney. So when we drafted this ordinance, when this was originally brought to us, we were mirroring the language of the fire code. Not trying to add any bells and whistles, but again, giving the police the same access that they would ordinarily have. So as to your question specifically on the commercial properties, we looked at some other language that had been adopted, like the city meridian and anything else. And theirs was a pretty narrowly tailored approach. Only specifically, I think theirs was specifically to multifamily. And when we looked at this, we said, well, if you're going to get into facilities with a common area, what types of facilities should this apply to? So we said, well, we have gated communities. What makes gated community with a common area different if the police need to get in there to address an exigent circumstance to having a gated community? You have those lockboxes out there. You see those. So yeah, they could drive a battering ram through the gate, which would be messy and time-consuming. But we contemplated extending it to that as well. So on the commercial side of things, I don't know that there's that many facilities that would apply to it. But it was contemplated to be more than just in a residential context. So you have like those business park situations. So we left it broad enough to apply. And then the other thing I'd like to clarify is when the Chief was speaking, you were talking about the specific technology that we were talking about. I think we left it broad enough so when the permits come in, the developer or whoever's building the property have the ability to work with the Chief to customize that for that particular facility. So we're not locked into one format or the other to accommodate the developer's wishes. So it's not a one-size-fits-all proposition.
So you're saying that the language you're comfortable with is general enough to apply pretty much anywhere there's a common area that we need access to?
Yeah. And again, on the development side is when we would ferret those out. And that's why this is for a public hearing tonight, is because it's in the development code.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I hear what you're saying as far as making it not too specific to then exclude properties that don't fall within that criteria. But that did kind of raise the question to me of, how do we apply this then to common areas within commercial space that may need, we may need access to?
Yeah.
And secondary to that is, in most of those common area spaces, there is a common merit, common area maintenance fee for each of those suites. So maybe this is off track, but if we enter into a property due to an exigent circumstance and there's damage due to that, damage to the property, does that then, where does that fall as far as responsibility?
Well, we're always going to be liable for unnecessary damage or anything else, but that's, that's why there's insurance for one thing.
Okay.
So it doesn't relieve us of any liability for property damage unless it's justified or anything else. Like, I don't practice criminal law, so I don't want to step too far into that area. But it's not alleviating that. Like I said, it's clarifying. You have a locked mall. You need to get into a mall with a common area or any of those circumstances. We're trying to keep it broad enough so we're not hamstringing it. And we can always revise this thing down the road if we say, yeah, this isn't working or anything else. And this is the first brush for you guys to get your thoughts on it, which I'm encouraging in the conversation. So if there's something that's not sitting right or anything else, we can always take it back and to the drawing board and work it again. But this is a request from the police, and it has been vetted through P and Z. We've already had public hearings on this and have been working on it for quite a while.
Yeah, and I think, I think it, you know, I'm definitely in support of it. I think I would, I would also support maybe not exclusive language, but as examples of, you know, apartment complex with, to include those but not exclusive to them.
Yeah. And like I said, we can, we can consider other language. Try not to put too many examples in the code because this is a codified section in the development code. So there's, there's give and take to any of that. You don't want it to get too long to where you're giving specific examples and excluding others. But I understand the concern.
Thank you.
So. And I'm sorry to step on your shoes.
Thank you, Chris. So, so my comments are really contemplating that this be in a residential common area, but it sounds like it would be more broadly applicable potentially. And there are fewer constitutional concerns in the context of a commercial environment. So. Any other questions?
So I'm not sure if this would be a question for you or the Chief, but from my practice, typically, particularly in a residential building such as this, the reason that there is a lock to the common area is to add an extra layer of security, which then makes the tenants feel safer and so forth. And obviously, there are situations where first responders, be it fire department or police department, are, you know, by right can be there, exigent circumstances being such. Just for an example, I'm not saying it's ever happened here, ever would happen here, but weird things happen sometimes. So say there is a officer who, somebody owes him money. And he knows that person lives in this apartment complex where the common area has a code. And he uses, uses the, the access code to go find that person. What happens?
Well, what happens is he's now outside of the protections of qualified immunity. And if you would like to speak.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So we, we currently do have a policy within the police department. It's, I think it's thirty-three twenty-two point two, which talks about exigent circumstances and when that can be used, obviously responding to a call. If we have a scenario typically that we just displayed and we are made aware of that, that would be more of an internal investigation on that officer for abusing that policy for one and abusing the code for another. So they would be held accountable through a, a internal investigation on that officer.
They may also be subject to criminal penalties.
I guess that was more, that was more my question.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, what you're describing, so there are a couple of different responses to that. One, there, there might be an underlying criminal violation such as stalking, something like that. Trespassing, disturbing the peace. I mean, there are a number of ways that might be analyzed as a criminal offense. They also then liability per se, say they damaged property while they're entering. They lose any sort of protections that would otherwise be provided by qualified immunity. So when law enforcement is acting within the, the bounds of their appropriate discretion, within the parameters of what's constitutionally appropriate, there's a certain amount of protection they have that they lose if they engaged in, you know, conduct like that and so.
Okay. Thank you. Again, not saying that whatever happened. Just.
Hypothetically.
Questions?
Any other questions?
Hey, that's it. So that's the staff report and, and the proponent, right?
Yep. So you'd open it up for any public comment?
Anybody who wants to testify?
We don't.
So I'm assuming you guys don't want to rebut. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like to act?
Can I just say really fast, this was brought, this specific, very specific scenario was brought to me by a sergeant. And I've been told to not say specific people's names, so I won't. But I would just like to make sure that that sergeant gets very specific thanks for bringing this up so that I could bring it up to, I think I emailed Bob Seal in the very beginning about this, perhaps requested it. So anyway, that specific officer was doing a great job and very appropriately asked for something that I think is in the service of all Post Falls residents. So I hope that that gets passed down to that individual.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good, okay. Because, yeah, I don't see them. So anyway, I, well, I don't want to make a motion. I mean.
Well, it's also too, as long as we're on the topic, this is ancillary to this, this actual ordinance. But I would, I would like to see efforts also to reach out to the owners or managers of existing facilities to voluntarily offer the access as well, because obviously this is only going to be for new projects going forward. And I, and I, it's, the value to having access in exigent circumstances is obvious. So I, I think some, and, you know, I don't know anybody else, but, you know, I'd be open to even some perhaps incentives for installing, allowing such access, installing such devices. But that's something I think we would be good to contemplate in the future.
So my only question on passing the ordinance now is, is to my, you know, question about, are we comfortable with the current language to codify that now? Or is it kind of a living document that we want to make any changes to? Or how do you feel about?
So you can pass the ordinance now. It would come back for final adoption with any proposed changes at the next meeting. If we pass it and you want to amend it later on, we would just go through the, the same process that we've gone through. It would have to go through the public hearing process again, just because of where it's located in the code.
One concern I have, I think, that goes along with Mr. Ziegler's is, if it's not, if it's pretty vague as to which type of common area this applies to and which it doesn't, then might somebody end up being subject to penalties that was unaware, perhaps, that, that their type of building was subject to this ordinance? Is there some kind of simple language that we could put in there that says any building that is reasonably expected to have occupants 24 hours a day? Because that would cover all residential, obviously, and some, you know, commercial spaces that may have exigent circumstances in the middle of the night with a common area. Is that something simple like that that we could put in there? Still vague enough, but?
I don't know that the language is necessarily vague. Like I said, broad. I like the term broad.
Sorry, broad, excuse me.
And again, because this is contemplated at the building development stage, we're going to be relying a lot of the times on the staff and the city. So when the applications come in, at that time, they're going to be aware of the other requirements. So when the commercial developer comes in and they say, hey, how does this apply? And like, excuse me, they do for any other building permits or construction project, they're like, here are the codes you're, you're going to need to satisfy that. So I would expect that would be worked out at this stage. I'd rather not legislate from the bench if we can to, because it's already gone through the public hearing process once or twice already. If we have other language that prob, that presents problems later on, I'd suggest we address it at that point. Like I said, because this is at the development stage, you're dealing with it at that stage. And that's when the police would get involved. The Chief would be able to look at any, any systems put in. So there would be some dialogue. It's not like somebody's going to go out there and start getting penalized for not doing it because I think they're going to have a fair amount of warning before they get to that stage that, have you looked at this? This is what's going to need to apply.
So does the, the Chief then make the ultimate decision at the development stage as to whether or not that's required for that particular development?
No, I, I think once it's codified, it's, it's applicable across the board.
It says the Chief of Police is authorized to require the owner or developer. So I imagine the process would start from our end, saying, hey, we're going to require this on the property. So I don't think we would have a situation where there are penalties for somebody who is unaware.
Like I said, it's going to be, it'll be a work in process, but my recommendation is to move it forward and say, if we have some kinks, we can bring it back.
Counselor Ziegler, can I ask, are you, you are wanting the language to make sure that it applies to commercial buildings? Is that right?
I think it would be applicable to commercial buildings.
I just want to make sure that I.
Yeah, I, I think, I hear what you're saying. I think there's some language that would probably be, be worked out in the wash, you know, so to speak.
We could, we could clarify and just add in commercial and residential, if that's the concern, that it's not clearly applying to both commercial and residential properties with common areas. And I think it's important to stress again, in common areas, you don't have a privacy interest. You have no expectation of privacy in common area. If you go in your apartment and your complex and you sit in the hallway and start smoking something and anything else, you don't have a privacy interest in that. And that's the areas we're talking about. But if it's important to clarify that this is applicable to all types of properties, we could maybe look at some language and bring it back in the final ordinance if that's the preference.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Sure.
Because this, to McGovern's point, this really isn't giving the police access to anywhere that they don't have access. This is really saying, here's a key so you can get in faster as opposed to us breaking a door so that we can also get in quickly if we need to, right? Like, that's what this ordinance does.
The short read of it is it avoids the destruction of property.
Yeah, okay. So they can still get into a commercial property. It would just be easier to do it this way.
And probably cheaper.
And probably cheaper for all parties involved. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood it. Okay.
Personally, I'm happy with it as written. It doesn't specify residential anywhere in here. It talks about buildings with common areas, so.
I agree.
I think if there's a shared office space, then the Chief of Police could reach out during the process.
I agree with you, Counselor. Absolutely. I think they just, it's something that's needed and to have, to sleep on it and revise it and bring it back wastes time. And if we feel like the able legal staff of the city, you know, needs to change it, they can do that at a later time.
Any further discussion? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
Do you want me to give it a try here?
Give it a roll.
Okay. I move to place the ordinance, ordinance on police access in exigent circumstances on its first and only reading, oh, by title only while under suspension of the rules? Or did we need to approve it first? Darkies.
So you're reading for, for the actual adoption of the ordinance? So tonight, it would just be, you'd move to approve the ordinance and have it brought back for final adoption?
So the, the third bullet. Okay, I'll do that one. I move to approve the ordinance, ordinance of police access in exigent circumstances and to direct the, yeah, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and be published by, no, just, I just moved to approve it.
Just move to approve it.
For Pete's sakes, I'm so sorry. I moved to approve the ordinance, ordinance on police access in exigent circumstances.
How about a second?
Thank you so much.
I would have been the same road on you or on, so. So thanks for taking that bullet for me. A motion in a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Westland?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Before moving on, that reminds me, was there something I was supposed to add at the beginning of the meeting that I forgot? Presentation about a court case?
So we're just going to do an extra report under staff reports, and there's no need to actually add it to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business and returning ordinances and resolutions, we have the ordinance prohibiting disruption or obstruction of city government operations and offices. Chief? Counsel, Chief McLean, Police Department. I don't get an opportunity to stand in you guys much, so I figure if I do it twice every time, I'll get my time in advance. Again, this is going to be a, a split presentation. Bringing this ordinance, or this request back to clarify a few areas that had some concern, why we feel the need that this ordinance needs to happen. And again, legal-wise, I'll have the prosecutor step up and go over some of the constitutional issues and so forth that, that might clear up some of those concerns that were here last time.
that might clear up some of those concerns that were here last time. So again, like before, I'm going to basically explain how this came in. I've seen this over the years in my career. I've seen where certain city employees wind up getting into an issue where they are abused, is what I want to call it. And this one was so outrageous to me and my staff that this is kind of what brought the idea of bringing this forward to give some protection to the employees of the city, not the police department itself, not the police officers itself. Let me change that. We have our own protections under statute that protect us from abuse from individuals and so forth. This is specifically for the employees of the city, to protect them in their duties and to prevent them from being hampered in their duties by being harassed or abused or anything like that. So what brought this forward was an issue in the wintertime with a snowplow driver. Reported that a man had run out in front of the snowplow and threatened him. When we investigated it, the snowplow driver operator was plowing snow westbound on West 13th towards North Fur Street and observed a male that was walking alongside the snowplow, waving at him and whistling at him. And when he saw that the man was trying to get his attention, he stepped out of the snowplow and asked, you know, what can I do for you? The gentleman began to cuss, wanted him to get out of, this is quotes, out of the statement, wanted him to get out of the truck so he can kick, so I can kick your, and I'll let you guys fill in the rest. The operator advised that, once he determined that the male was hostile, he got back in his snowplow truck and proceeded to leave. And that's when the individual tried to block him from doing the rest of his plowing on that road. Obviously, we were notified. We showed up. The male was less than cooperative with law enforcement and eventually retreated back into his house and allowed the plow truck to continue on with his duties. This was enough of a concern for us that I approached the street department and said, if we're going to be plowing this street in the future again, notify us. We'll come up. We'll follow the plow truck down the road to make sure that he can get his duties done without being harassed by this individual. Later down the road, we were able to press charges on this individual and he was found guilty for assaulting the plow truck driver. So that's one of many. I have others example that I want to go over as well. A message was left on the city administrator's voicemail. Caller used vulgar language, racist language, demanding action to be taken. One of the prosecutors fired and the police department reprimanded. That was left on the voicemail. Subject was trespassed from City Hall for rude acting, aggressive and vocally abusive towards the finance staff that was at the front desk. Police were called. We removed him and he was trespassed from City Hall. Water department, water department employee reported she was sent to hang a water shut-off notice on a door that the resident met her outside, refused to take the tag and said she, said if she put the tag on the door, his dog would attack her. She was fearful enough that she put the tag on, I think it was a business sign that was in his front yard, and then left the area. Subject called dispatch center numerous times, yelling, being rude, calling dispatchers vulgar names. Subject left a message on the finance department's voicemail, angry because his water got shut off, cursing, threatening that the water better be turned back on or else. In the past, I've seen also where people were aware that their water's going to get shut off and instead of paying their bill or cooperating with the city, they decide to park their car over the meter so they can't get to it to shut it off. Or it gets shut off and then they cut the lock off. Again, difficult to prove it's them, but they cut the lock off, the water's turned back on, and it's just a revolving game. Building inspectors being cussed out or verbally confronted trying to complete their inspections or have red-tagged the project. They are confronted and harassed. These are a few examples of what seems to be an increasing issue with the city staff, that city staff is subject to being abused by individuals that feel they are entitled to verbally abuse them, threaten them and hinder them from doing their jobs. And I feel that personally, that that is unacceptable. I've covered most of this already. What we've seen is the increase in employees being threatened, harassed, belittled because of the work and where they work. What happens is a lot of times this does not rise to the level of a arrestable crime for us. A lot of times, the employee would have to be the one that actually proceeds with the charges as a citizen's arrest or something to that effect. Because in the state of Idaho, misdemeanors have to happen in the law enforcement presence for us to take action on those. If it doesn't happen in our presence, then it has to be the individual that moves forward. And that's uncomfortable for a city employee that may live in the community and eventually may run into this individual at Walmart or another store. And that raises potential for additional confrontation for this city employee. So a lot of times, they either won't report it or they don't want to pursue it because they will have to go through the whole process of going to court and so forth like this. This will help give us a little bit more teeth on protecting our city employees and allowing them to do their job. Is there any questions on my portion that you guys have for me?
I would add that, at least in my opinion, the greater concern, rather than running into the same person at a Walmart randomly, is that likely if they ran into this person and were harassed or assaulted in the carrying out or attempted carrying out of their duties, they're going to have to, in carrying out their duties in the future, encounter the same person again.
Correct. Yes.
I think that, to me, ought to be the focus, as opposed to just running into somebody randomly.
Right.
But. Any further? A city staff is put in a unique situation in that they would have to encounter the same person over and over and over again in the commission of their duties.
Exactly.
Can you give a little more clarity on how this provides better tools than what we have now? It sounds like for the guy blocking the snowplow, he was, he said convicted of assault. So it was, does this help in any way against what we have already?
I think that's going to be covered by the prosecutor section. A little more clarity as to what enforcement options we have as opposed to what the, this ordinance will help us with.
Can, may I ask, you said that for other misdemeanors, the police have to be present at the occurrence to?
Correct.
Do anything about it. How would this ordinance be different than that if it was still, I mean, it's still happening against city staff and potentially the police aren't there?
Because it's actually an ordinance in itself, and I'm sure she'll cover this more, but it would give the authority for us to act on actions of this individual towards city staff.
But the city staff would still have to report it?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Just like they would have to report anything else?
I think the difference is that the city would be filing the charges rather than the individual.
Just as the city, not the individual.
Correct. It would give us the authority to pursue with those charges.
Okay.
Counselors, for the record, Eileen McGovern, Post Falls City Prosecutor. I just want to clarify a little bit about what Chief was talking about with the, so it's the Clark case in Idaho, which has essentially established, confirmed that the Idaho Constitution requires, in order for an officer to arrest on a misdemeanor offense, that that misdemeanor offense has to happen in their presence. They can still take action on it. So if it's just reported to them, they can follow up. They can investigate. They can issue a citation. They also can arrest, but only if there's a citizen who observed that offense, who is willing to sign a citizen's arrest form that would essentially allow the police then to facilitate that arrest on that citizen's behalf. That's the process that a city employee would have to undertake in order to at least have an arrest made if there was a criminal violation against them. Again, creating a pretty awkward situation for that city employee. I want to, the snowplow incident, as Chief indicated, that in that case, that individual was found guilty of assault, because the events in that case were such that he happened to make the right kinds of threats, make the right kind of action. There had to be the right kind of emotional response by the snowplow driver. So there are a bunch of things that have to happen in order for that to have satisfied the elements of assault. So that was, I guess, lucky, weirdly, from prosecutor's perspective, that we were able to do that. But what else happened there, though, that we may not be able to charge otherwise? There was delay. There was obstruction. There was disruption. So we don't currently have a code section that really qualifies for that. And I'm going to talk about disturbing the peace in a minute, because I know that might be a question. And I'm going to, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm not sure what I'm doing here now. Let's see. Okay. Nope. Quick slide. Okay. Thank you. So getting to, again, I'm going to kind of take this in the same way that I took the last one, attending to your concerns expressed at the prior meeting. Is the language too broad or unconstitutional? No, it is not. And why is that? All of the terms that show up in the language of the statute also show up in statutes that have been deemed constitutional in Idaho. So disturbing the peace with a caveat, and I'm going to get to that in a minute, because that's important, resisting obstructing, stalking, assault, these are just a handful. There are others that use language that is similar or identical in a lot of cases to what is proposed in this statute that has been deemed to pass constitutional muster. Disturbing the peace is interesting for a couple of reasons. One, because I know that part of your concern is whether or not we're going to be criminalizing conduct that ought to be protected, like free speech, that kind of thing. And the Idaho Supreme Court in the State versus Poe case actually determined that part of the disturbing the peace statute was unconstitutional, because it did exactly that. The language that it considered was whether or not a person has disturbed the peace if they use any vulgar, profane or indecent language within the presence or hearing of children. And the court determined that that is too broad, that is unconstitutional, because it limits free speech. Because there are, there's an important distinction in both the United States Supreme Court law as well as Idaho, content versus conduct. So you can't restrict just the content of someone's speech. In most circumstances, there are some caveats to that. But for First Amendment purposes, you generally cannot do that. However, you can criminalize conduct or speech that is accompanied by threats or disruption of some sort. So that has been attended to. There's nothing in the proposed ordinance that would run afoul of those constitutional considerations.
I'd quickly add, we did add language from the last time you saw this, based on those concerns, to add unlawfully to the, both the word unlawfully as well as a description of what unlawfully means. It's clear.
We feel safe. If I may just read that, so that it's been highlighted and added. For purposes of this section, unlawfully does not include conduct protected under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution or Article 1, Section 9 of the Idaho Constitution, such as peaceful protests or lawful public assembly. So of course, those would be protected anyway. We can't create unconstitutional ordinances. But that does specifically address that concern. And I guess in the same vein, all of these laws are subject to reasonableness standards, context and common sense principles inherent in Idaho law. So if a court were to review this, they would be subject to all of the precedent of Idaho constitutional law thus far, and we have taken that into account in drafting this ordinance. So why do we need this ordinance specifically? This ordinance I would propose to you is kind of like a Goldilocks ordinance. And by that, I mean, it's kind of like resisting and obstructing for law enforcement. So disturbing the peace is an ordinance that has been deemed not to apply to law enforcement, because the Idaho Supreme Court and actually the United States Supreme Court have both determined that when a law enforcement officer goes out to exercise his or her duties, their peace cannot be disrupted, because essentially they have assumed the risk of having their peace disturbed when they determine to be a law enforcement officer and then go out to exercise those duties. There is a very realistic likelihood that a court could expand that concept to city workers, to snowplow drivers, to people who have taken on a position in which they are likely to encounter disruptive situations as part and parcel of their job. So there is a concern that the disturbing the peace code may be too broad. It's also just very broad in its language and may not cover a lot of the sort of delay, obstruction, disruption that is contemplated by the examples that the chief has presented. We have other codes like resisting obstructing that are too narrow. They apply to law enforcement officers specifically. Cover that. So there we go. So law enforcement, healthcare workers, teachers, we have a number of state codes and ordinances that do apply to people who are employed in certain capacities that we feel we have a duty to protect in those capacities. So a healthcare worker, if you batter a healthcare worker, that's a felony. If you did exactly the same thing to someone on the street, that's a misdemeanor. And there's a reason for that. We prioritize the important work that those people are doing. And I think we're in a similar position from a policy perspective here when we're looking at snowplow drivers who are out just trying to do their job, who are, as Counselor Ziegler noted, I'm sorry, it was Counselor Malloy, likely to encounter those folks over and over again in the performance of those duties. I want to back up a couple slides real quick. The other problem with disturbing the peace, it's also too broad potentially in that it is part of a general category of statutes which are meant to generally regulate conduct in a neighborhood, around a family, generally in the community. Again, maybe too broad in a lot of cases to apply to the conduct at issue here tonight in relation to city employees. So upshot here, this is a, again, kind of a Goldilocks statute, intended to protect this specific group of people who are engaged in employment that we value in order to protect them in the commission of their essential community functions. And I believe that's all I have, if there are any questions.
Well, if the question is much of a clarification, but one other thing, the key points of this ordinance to me is that if somebody is acting in a way that prevents a city agent, let's say, from conducting their business, then that doesn't just affect that agent, it also affects all the rest of us taxpayers. So the example of a snowplow, somebody may very politely lay down in front of the snowplow, but that's preventing, you know, it's burning diesel. We're paying that guy to not be able to plow the street. Everybody else is affected because their movement of snow is delayed and that may cause an accident or whatever. If a building inspector is very politely but unlawfully not allowed to perform his or her duties, then the building owner is affected financially by that. Other buildings that need to be inspected may be affected by that, because that inspection's going to be delayed, et cetera. If somebody is preventing, is cutting locks off of a water shut-off, then us taxpayers are paying to replace those locks and send that person back out over and over and over again, even if it's done very politely. So I don't think so much, the key for me, of this for me is the manner in which the obstruction is done. It's that the obstruction is done in a manner that affects the performance of city duties that we all pay for.
That was incredibly well stated. I feel like we should trade places here. And that's, I think that gets to precisely the policy concern here. That's the reason we specifically protect teachers, law enforcement officers, healthcare workers, for exactly that reason, because it affects so many other, I guess, considerations by those of us who rely on those people.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right page there, because so much of the emphasis was on the manner of the obstruction, but I think that's probably actually secondary.
I think that's well taken. You've stated the policy basis for this proposed ordinance very well.
On the second part about disruption of government offices, how is this different than just trespassing someone?
Well, I think it gets to the same point again. If somebody comes into a government office and they're acting in a way that disrupts the conduct of that office, they can be trespassed, but that's a procedure that would have to be undertaken. So law enforcement has to show up, trespass them from that property. If they left at that point, there would be no violation, frankly. point, there would be no violation, frankly. And, and frankly, if they left at that point, we probably wouldn't charge them with anything anyway, because then there would be no ongoing concern. But let's say they were, they were cited, and then if, if they'd already created enough of a disruption that they were potentially liable pursuant to this ordinance, they still wouldn't be liable pursuant to the trespassing ordinance, because that requires the procedure of warning them, and then having them violate that warning.
Okay, so they could come and make a mess, and we tell them to leave, and they leave, and then we can't trespass them?
Yep. You got it.
Okay. And on the, on the first one, it says, elected or appointed officer, employee or agent of the city. Who, who's an agent of the city? Does that include people we hire, construction companies that are doing work for us?
That's a good question. So yeah, does it, does it extend to contractors and employees? That is a good question, and that's one of those, I guess, that's one of those it depends lawyer answers, I think, you know, the, the degree to which they are affiliated with the city would be considered in the charging decision. So again, a lot of this is subject to a common sense reasonableness standard. I think what this contemplates primarily are people who are directly, direct employees of the, of the city, though. So I think people who are more tangentially associated with the city would probably not, a, a court probably wouldn't determine that they were covered under this statute.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I, then, I really appreciate having your expertise, looking at all of this. I think that's very helpful.
I think I appreciate the good questions.
I, I still, I guess I do still have some questions. I appreciate what, I actually appreciate what you had to say, Counselor Malloy, 'cause I hadn't thought of it in that way, but I wonder, to the point of cutting off water lock things, isn't that property damage that they are liable for?
Sure.
Okay, so that's already, that's already an issue. I, I struggle with the idea that anyone deserves to be treated this way, whether it is someone sitting at the front desk of the city, which we now have that door locked, so that was extra protection that was given to the people that work in this building. But like, someone at a fast food, like, counter doesn't deserve to be talked to like that. Like, there are, I mean, somebody checking your groceries, whoever you're talking to on the phone to make an appointment at your doctor's office, that aren't afforded the special protections for healthcare workers that you're speaking of. Like, this isn't something that anybody should be treated by. And the way that this reads, it really seems to give extra protection to the government against the residents, and that, just that idea of it, while I definitely understand the taxpayer access of it, but like, peacefully laying down in a street, whether there's a snowplow or not, that is an offense. Like, that is something that you're not, you can't block traffic in the middle of Seltice by laying down, right? Like, you'll be removed for that, and potentially charged with something, so.
Potentially.
And it's not, it's not life-saving that the snow be removed in the next five minutes, when we're talking about protections against healthcare workers. That's because you can't deny the person coming into the building to receive care. So if they assault you and freak out, or do something, you can't just trespass them, because they still legally require care. The same with the police officers, right? Like, they are still, they still have a job and a service to provide. So I just, and with the trespassing, the difference than regular trespassing, what's in here, if they make a mess, and then they leave, potentially they could be charged with property damage, or they're just turkeys. And like, I don't know what we do about that, but we can't make people be nice with an ordinance. And I'm, I'm just happy that I like the first ordinance, so I could be excited about something, and I'm so sorry. But that's, that's my concern with this.
No, and I understand what you're saying, and, and so I guess to address part of what you're saying, there are often going to be circumstances where somebody could be liable for other things, like the assault with the snowplow driver, certainly, or, you know, like malicious injury to property with the locks. But I think what we're looking at, again, is this bigger policy consideration. So you use the examples of the healthcare worker, you know, they have, have no choice about being there, law enforcement officer who's out, in the performance of their duties. I think this is a very similar scenario, where you have government employees that taxpayers have charged with the performance of necessary duties a lot of the time. I mean, plowing the streets is time-consuming, it's something that needs to happen in order to secure the safety of residents, in order to cure, to, to allow for transportation. So I, I think that the contemplation here is that it's very much like being a teacher, being a law enforcement officer, being a healthcare worker, in that the community has entrusted these people with specific duties, that those duties are vital to the administration of our community, and the performance of, I mean, just the, the ability to logistically go about our days, really requires these services to work well. And so laying down in front of a snowplow is functionally distinct from laying down in front of your neighbor's car for that reason, because you're interfering with a, a bigger process.
But laying down in front of one snowplow on a residential street is not the same thing as the entire city not being plowed of snow, which seems to sort of be the correlation that we're trying to draw a little bit here, is that like, and putting a tag for water to have the water shut off, I don't want that employee in that situation either. I think that that's terrible, and I think that they should just leave. I think it, it seems to be more reasonable that we have a policy, like in our HR level, that if there is a situation where a snowplow driver gets out of the car and someone starts yelling them, they immediately get back in the car and they call the police. If someone's putting a tag on someone's house for something, and someone is belligerent and threatening, immediately stop the duty that you're doing, remove yourself from the situation, stay safe, and let the police handle it. Like, putting a tag on someone's home is not something that delays the water delivery for the whole city, or delays, like, life-saving care to someone. And, and so I think these are not the same situations, and that's probably all that I have to say about it. So I, I'm sorry, yeah, that's how I feel about it.
I appreciate that. I guess what I would say is, these things are incremental, though. So first of all, if you're laying, that, that one person who's laying down from the snowplow, that snowplow provider's gonna have to drive by their house the next day, and possibly the next day, and maybe the next week, and so.
Can't give them a different route?
I mean, and so, so now we're having to give different routes to the, to the snowplow drivers, who've, and another snowplow driver's gonna have to do that job. And I guess, and not, not, I guess, the, the last thing I wanna say, laying down in front of that one snowplow, fine, in that one moment, but again, I mean, just like if you strike that healthcare worker that one time, it doesn't disrupt the entire healthcare industry, but, but we're holding that person to, to, I guess, we're, we're holding people to a higher standard for folks that we have entrusted with, with fundamental, essential duties.
Fair enough. And I definitely don't wanna sound like I don't appreciate those duties, and I don't appreciate the staff that works at the city. It's more of a, it's, it's more of a hesitancy with making this law that, that makes me concerned.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
One, one clarification, some of what Councilwoman says resonates with me, but it's not my broader concern. I think, my concern was one of the examples that the Chief used, which was a nasty voicemail, you know? Somebody has a bad day, like, I deal with the public in, and get paid for it. And, and I, you know, I, I'm the escalation at the top of the chain. I'm, I'm not necessarily in tech support, but we have large customers that will, you know, get a little bit out of hand, and I have to come in and de-escalate. But, you know, I wouldn't want that customer to then, I, I guess what I wanna clarify is, if somebody calls and leaves, you know, they're having a bad day, and they leave a ba, nasty voicemail, that's not threatening?
Yeah.
Or, we wouldn't go arrest them under this ordinance, right?
No. I mean, I, I could say very, very confidently, that somebody being angry, leaving an angry voice message, that isn't, that doesn't create an imminent threat. And it's gonna be different if someone's standing in, you know, in the rotunda versus if they're calling in, of course.
Absolutely. I'm with you on that. Physical presence makes the difference.
Right, right. So how imminent or likely is the threat is a consideration. But I think that gets back to the content versus conduct, kind of distinction that the Supreme Court makes. So I mean, people can say things all day long, that we, we have the right to do that in this country. They can, if they wanna call in and yell at city staff because they feel they've been wronged, they have every right to do that. We draw the line, of course, when, when things get dangerous.
Sure.
So, I mean, I'm trying to, I, I can't think of a circumstance where that voicemail short of a legitimate threat, or a, you know, concerning threat would create trouble.
Just for clarity, this individual, it wasn't just the city administrator, it was also, the police department was also, the prosecutor's department, this individual was pretty much relentless at just continuing to leave voicemails, demanding that something be done. So it, it's a combination of things. That particular one, I agree 100%. No one's gonna get charged for leaving a nasty voicemail, but when you have an individual that continues, and continues, and continues, example, the police department. So three or four phone calls, not, back-to-back, saying abusive things, you're tying up our dispatch center, you're tying up the ability for these dispatchers to take additional calls. He's not calling in on 911, so it's not a violation, he is just tying up our phone system. And we have to answer the phone, 'cause we obviously don't know it's him at this point. So it's a combination of things. It's not just this one individual. I actually had sent a letter to this individual, asking him to cease and desist. So it just kinda went from there. That was just a, a broad example as to what we're seeing, that we're not typically used to seeing, but is getting more common.
Right.
And that's a great example of conduct that wouldn't necessarily rise to disturbing the peace, because it isn't a family and neighborhood, you know, it's not, it's not the right audience. And, you know, it's, it's not disruption of 911 services, which is already contemplated in Idaho code, but it's doing the same thing, in that it's creating an impediment to the ability of government to function appropriately. And I think, getting back to what I guess Field's reference, we, we specifically indicated that we're, we're not going to be citing the citizens for exercising their First Amendment rights. That's just not gonna happen.
And this only applies when the city staff or agent is in the commission of city duties, correct?
Correct. Yes, not like your off-duty neighbor happens to work for the city, and you begin to aggress him, is, yeah, absolutely, they have to be in the commission of their duties. Just like resisting, obstructing law enforcement officer.
Right.
I would say, I'm sorry, I would just say one thing to your point of, in that position as well, as far as escalation of, of complaints and things like that.
Are you, are you looking at me?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Both of you, kind of. Kind of a similar, similar sticking point. But I guess the way I would differentiate that in my mind, or, or, you know, as far as this ordinance application, is, we're talking about essential services, that the customer has no alternative but to address that one agency. Whereas, you know, in my case, I had a, I had a escalated customer, and it got to a point of, you know, I'm ending our business with you, and I will gladly refer you somewhere else. So there's an alternative for that customer to seek the same or similar services somewhere else, where in this case, they have no alternative other than to interact with that city employee, whoever that may be. And I think that is probably part of the basis of this type of ordinance.
Absolutely. No, there's not another choice. There, it's a lot like what you're, you know, with the healthcare provider, they're in a position that they don't have a choice to be in, they're in there doing that job. There isn't really another option in that moment, when someone's in need, and so I think it is a similar circumstance. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we could probably find situations where maybe this could be abused, but something that kinda sets my mind at ease is, any, any action or, or penalty brought as a condition of this is still going to be subject to a reasonableness standard, right? And so if this is abused, it'll be, like, the courts are the mechanism for, kind of the, the protection for going overboard on these things, right?
Well, absolutely. Ultimately, the court is, first stop is law enforcement, they have discretion to cite or not cite. Next step is prosecution, we have discretion. We, if we look at a case and think, yeah, this is, you know, I don't think a, a reasonable jury is gonna find beyond a reasonable doubt that there has been a criminal violation here. Either because it doesn't meet the elements of the offense, or because it just doesn't feel right. I mean, juries, you know, if, if it just feels hinky, they're gonna find not guilty. And then ultimately, the courts would, would be in a position to determine whether or not the statute itself is constitutional, either as applied or as it's written, and whether, in that particular case, it was used correctly.
Yeah. I think we all agree that it's unfortunate that we're placed in this position, but the reality is, is that character's been lost, and that we deal with people that always might not necessarily understand how to be civil. So as councilman, we can stand here and actually support our staff, and to be able to assist in that. I mean, to me, it makes perfect sense, and I fully support it.
And for me, it's not, it's not just supporting the staff, it is that, but it's also, to go back to stealing water, and somebody's not letting somebody turn off their water and just leave, well, that person is stealing water, the rest of us are all paying for it. So I, for, it's, for me, it's, it's protecting the taxpayers of the city as much as it is the staff.
Thank you. Again, I couldn't have put it better. Thank you, Counselor Malloy.
Can I say, I think that my opinion is protecting residents as well, just in, I just came to the opposite conclusion. So, you know.
Fair point. Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This one is not a public hearing, so.
Yeah, so.
I move to approve ordinance prohibiting disruption or obstruction of city government operations and offices.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
No.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business, tonight we have none. Next section is citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak, you have five minutes, please come up to the lectern and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Kim Brown. I'm a Post Falls area resident. I'm representing the Post Falls Historical Society, and tonight I am overjoyed to do, ask you, first of all, I'm gonna explain the program of, of America 250, and America 250 Idaho, and how that relates in our opportunities here in Post Falls. I have really enjoyed this meeting tonight, so counselors, thank you very much for giving us a good civics lesson. I've heard terms like respect, character, and connecting historic, what we wanna do is connect historic dots. So the America 250 program, have any of you heard of it? It was unveiled by Governor Brad Little earlier in July. So a lot of our folks are unaware of the opportunities here that Post Falls has, and so a lot of times, people don't get too revved up until there's a big celebration. In the case of America 250, we have multiple, I mean, probably 40 to 50 seeds of the American Revolution that have moved in from other areas, and are connecting our dots to our earliest foundings. And the time period that we're working in is from, the celebration is 250 years. So it's from 1776 to 2026. Communities throughout the United States and throughout Idaho will be having a big hoopla, and a big, they'll be very much revved up, doing something to recognize their history. So I'm offering to you, counselors, an upcoming event that the Post Falls Historical Society is sponsoring. We are within our midst. We have a relative of President George Washington that lives in Little Post Falls, Idaho. And so I wanted to cordially invite all of you to come to the Post Falls Library on March 15th, and this person will be sharing personal stories of the Washington family. She has this documented. And so you'll be hearing specific heritage, but also personal family stories. And those are the stories that we really wanna gather. The other thing that the Post Falls Historical Society is doing is, we're collecting oral video histories, and we are involved with the Idaho Historical Society. And any, any of you, I'm encouraging any of you here, particularly maybe Joe, because I remember Leonard Malloy and John Malloy have all been very supportive of historic preservation activities. So we wanna hear maybe some of the younger stories, or some of the memories of your family members. If you come in from other parts of the United States, you are part of the fabric. So whenever we're talking about the fabric of Post Falls, I stand before you as one of those little seeds of the American Revolution. So it's come across the prairies, over the hills, and through the river, and the woods, and you're sitting here as part of those threads, and we are part of the fabric of the United States. So if anybody's gonna get revved up, it's gonna be your historical group. Because when we were celebrating the Idaho Historical Society, that's when we had our city fathers. And I worked with these guys, these former mayors. Mayor Kent Helmer, Mayor Don Camps, Mayor Franny Wilhelm, Mayor Cecil Meyer, were all charter members of the Post Falls Historical Society. And so I've talked with the granddaughter of Frederick Post, and the granddaughter of Chief Seltice. You know, folks, I get really revved up. Shelley can tell you this. We're pretty revved up about our history. But we need to kick, connect more of our dots. And so I've got a, I've prepared a little packet for you, on some of the things that we've worked on, and some of the wonderful opportunities. opportunities that we have that lie right before us here in Post Falls. Now, I've been working over with Darla Dreyer at the Jack. You know, they work on all kinds of historic things. And also with Christina Petit at the Chamber. So, you know, we're sitting in a huge little corridor here that has so much historic potential. Now, as you may or may not know, how can we do, how can we do this? So the governor and everyone is working on, together we will use this anniversary to build a brighter future for all Idahoans. So in order to do that, we need to connect some of these dots that are right at hand. Now, many of you know that we are sitting with the oldest building in Post Falls, the 102-year-old Chapin Building. We also have to the north of the Chapin Building, a dilapidated sign that is in the process of being removed, and it was the attempt of honoring veterans. The son of Walter Chapin, who built that building, his son was a pilot in World War II, and he never came home. So a lot of people
I did, right.
Say.
If we could summarize really quick.
We'll summarize. I've left you a packet. When you get a chance, please take a look at it. Come to this gathering on March 15th. Cordially, we invite you. And if you get a chance, please explore the possibilities. Now that we are the ninth-largest city in Idaho, we've got a lot to celebrate. Please consider the appointment of an Historic Preservation Commission and an Arts Commission that can advise the city on the wonderful opportunities that newer residents and newer ideas are coming into our community, and involving the public in a taxpayer-owned building, and in these issues that we love and care about, would be something I would hope you would explore.
Excellent.
But thank you for your time.
And a time on the 15th?
March 15th.
What time?
2:00. Post Falls Library. And if you have any questions, please look at those packets and get back to us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sounds like a homeschool field trip. Any other citizens wishing to speak? That will move on to administrative and staff reports.
So we were going to have Eileen step up and just provide an update on the Chadlin Smith article that some of you may have seen. And today's Cordlink Press, I believe, was also in the Idaho Statesman, as I recall.
Counselors, Eileen McGovern, Post Falls prosecutor. I'm just going to go through really quick, kind of the factual account that led up to this case, I mean, that sort of initiated this case. So law enforcement originally arrested Mr. Chadlin Smith on a stalking charge. The victim of that stalking offense actually was a Post Falls Police Department employee at the time, which is not particularly relevant, but is now relevant to her, because he may be released. But pursuant to investigating that offense, law enforcement ultimately arrested Mr. Smith for stalking. Incident to that arrest, they appropriately seized his phone, and then appropriately obtained, obtained a search warrant to search that phone. On that phone, they found images depicting child pornography. Officers informed Mr. Smith, kind of as a pretext, that they had completed the forensic examination of the phone, and coordinated with him to arrive at Post Falls City Hall in order to obtain that phone. Post Falls City Hall, because he was no longer permitted at the Post Falls Police Department given the identity of his stalking victim. He parked at Post Falls City Hall, parked legally, didn't create any safety concerns. They arrested him at Post Falls City Hall, again, appropriately, for a second time. Subsequent to that arrest, they impounded his vehicle, so which had been parked at City Hall. They did so pursuant to Post Falls Police Department policy at the time, which permitted law enforcement officers to impound vehicles after an individual was arrested in order to protect property. So property that might be in that vehicle, in order to preclude liability for law enforcement, if someone came back and said, hey, you arrested me and then just left my car parked there, and someone stole my computer. So that was one of the bases for the policy that permitted law enforcement to then tow that vehicle. Again, consistent with that policy, the vehicle was impounded at Post Falls Police Department, and an inventory search was undertaken. So when law enforcement appropriately tow or take custody of a vehicle, they're allowed to do an inventory search, which basically means going through, again, for the same reason, determining what's in that vehicle, making an inventory of it in order to be able to establish that things, nothing's gone missing, nothing's added, when ultimately someone may get their car back. But during the course of this inventory search, they located more electronic devices. And upon locating those devices, appropriately got another warrant in order to search those devices. On those devices, they found a bunch of images which ultimately led to the conviction of Mr. Smith for possession of child sexually exploitive material. That conviction occurred July 2022. This, before I talk more about this case, in 2023, the Idaho Supreme Court issued the State versus Ramos case. This is the case that was relied on very recently by the Supreme Court to overturn Mr. Smith's case. The important takeaways from the Ramos case are that basically reliance on the United States Supreme Court, which has stated that an inventory search must not be a ruse for general rummaging in order to discover incriminating evidence. The state must prove that the impounding and search of a vehicle were not pretextual, so basically not an excuse, and were otherwise reasonable. And when I say excuse, I mean excuse, obviously, to get into a vehicle that they otherwise wouldn't have had a legitimate basis to get into without a warrant. And then the, this is important for this case, the police concern that the property will be damaged or stolen by third parties if that vehicle is not impounded is not a sufficient justification for impounding the vehicle. So that Ramos case came out and undermined a bunch of law enforcement policies which existed throughout the state of Idaho, which was consistent with the Post Falls Police Department's policy. Basically, they, they all went away. They're no longer allowed to tow a car subsequent to an arrest if that car is parked legally and not creating a safety concern otherwise. Now, they can still tow the car if there is any sort of traffic violation, if it's creating any sort of safety concern. If, for instance, in this case, where the car was parked at City Hall, if there was a, you know, must, you know, maybe towed after 24 hours, or may not be here for long. If it was in violation of a stated ordinance or rule, then law enforcement can tow it. But that did not exist in this case, and so the court overturned Mr. Smith's conviction based on that inventory tow. So I think what's important to note is the Post Falls Police Department did not do anything wrong. They acted consistent with a policy that was at the time considered a standard policy, but which has since been overturned. So I hope that makes sense. I'm happy to answer clarifying questions.
Questions? Thank you for that summary. Appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you.
Do we have any other staff reports?
We do not. That was it, sir. Thank you.
All right, moving on to mayor and council comments. Mayor's not here. Counsel? Hearing none. We do not need an executive session tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And with that, the final motion shall be
Adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.